What? We're on. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Berlin Boys and Regional School Committee to a order. We have a pledge of allegiance first, please. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. John, is this getting ready?
Strolling in the door.
All right. So we're going to go just a little bit over with the agenda. We have a few special guests. We'll just give them a minute to come on in.
There, there. Oh, where is that? I just missed it. Okay.
So while these guys get set up, we're kind of moving business item number eight, I believe it's number eight, to the front for these guys, the special guests coming in.
We have one more guest who's been with us at the moment.
All right. John, you got a different situation in here. We could probably get to, since we're going out of orders, and is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Going out of order. Taking a motion to approve the consent agenda. Julie, Megan, second. All favor.
Aye.
I think motion passes, so let's take care of it. Here we are. So we're moving business item number eight to right now, and we've got some special guests with us.
Members of the school committee, these are members of my student council. They're our fifth graders. They're here to ask for your permission to do some fundraisers.
Hello, we're the BES student council and we're here to talk about our ideas for a school fundraiser. The fundraiser is called Carnations for a Cause. It will be a fundraiser for a charity called Make a Wish Foundation. This foundation helps children with critical illness and illness. We plan on starting the carnations even in the profit to this foundation. The student council will send flyers home and go classroom to classroom to advertise what we believe is information out. Students and family members will have the opportunity to purchase a carnation for students, faculty members, and also family members. We will be purchasing the carnations from Danielson Flowers Force. The cost is seventy-five cents, and we'll sell the carnations for two dollars each. We'll start taking orders for the carnations on March twentieth. We'll stop taking orders on March thirtieth. The flowers say they need two weeks in between, so we'll give out the flowers on April fourteenth. To give out the flowers, we will go to each classroom and hand them out. We hope you like our ideas.
Anybody have any questions?
Great job. You're doing awesome.
You survived.
All right. Thank you. So should we have a motion to approve a Berlin Memorial School fundraiser activity for carnations for cause?
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Julie, second. All favor.
Aye.
Yes. All right. Motion passes. Congratulations. Ladies.
They're a little.
They're great. I see them raising their hands and it fits like a total.
Well, hey, they were brave enough to get up there and do it, so that's one thing. Good stuff. Thank you. All right. So back to the top of the agenda, time for public comments. I don't think anybody has any. Does anybody have any public comments they'd like to make? Yeah, I see a hand raised over there, so.
Hi, I'm Carol Barnes from Berlin, student at BES, also associate with Link, the Parent Teacher Association. Just wanted to let you all know that the budget is top of mind for parents. And so we are working collectively on a get out and vote campaign as we replace childcare for the nine of the town vote that will be at on school with grounds and cafeteria so that as many parents and kids encouraged to be there, happy, ready to be there. So we're talking, we're learning from all of you. We're continuing to learn from the town. We are here to support. Thank you.
Any other? I see some new faces. Anybody have public comment they'd like to make? Yeah, okay.
Hi, Christina Calvo-Maderos. I'm also a student in the room. I am the treasurer for the BES BTO. Similar to what those guys are doing in Berlin, we are trying to get the word out for parents as to what this whole process looks like, the types of things that you guys are reviewing and maybe putting forward and voting on. And we have similar plans to rally parents to come out and vote to support the budgets that we need for our students to continue to grow and have the experiences that they deserve.
Hi, Patty Anne Inwood, teacher of Wilson Elementary School. I'm sorry, I'm coming in a little unfly. Terrible service at the primary tonight. Anyway, we just wanted to come tonight to represent our staff and friends at Wilson Elementary School. I was able to listen in last night to the meeting between the financial committee and the school committee about what was happening with regards to the budget. And one of the things that really struck me was someone said, you know, we're not being pitted against one another, and we wanted to let you know that we're aware of that. You know, we've been talking a lot about how there's no bad guy in this situation, that we're all coming together to try and find some balance between what the students need and what the town needs from a financial perspective. So we really wanted to say thank you because we know how much you are valuing what we do and how hard you're looking to try and make sure that what we do is appreciated and taken care of. So thank you for that. We also wanted to make sure that you knew, and I'm sure the folks at Berlin feel the same way, we really love our jobs. Every single one of us. We really value all of our new employees and would hate to lose any of them. And last night when I was listening in on the Zoom, and I don't know who it was, I apologize because the camera was only pointing at Carol, that's why I was so tired. But someone made the comment, they complimented us on the amazing job that we are doing, considering the poor people expenditure that we have in comparison to other school districts. And they're not wrong. And it's because we're working our tails off with what we have. And parents may not know, you know, the roof is leaking in the library, that my classroom was leaking for the past three years, and I was worried I might get the black lung. I was worried I was going to get the black lung. My coworker, her laptop, excuse me, for work, quit working. And the tech department said, I hope we can fix it because we don't have another one. I have students who are going to take the MCAS in a few weeks. We don't have all the keys on one keyboard. So the situation is not ideal, but you're not going to hear that from us because every day we're coming in and we are getting the best experience that we can teach. Because we love your kids and we love being in Williston and we love being in Berlin. So we appreciate all that you're doing. We have faith that the parties are going to come to the table and we're going to figure this all out. And we've got our fingers crossed, all the parts crossed. So thank you so much for coming together and doing all this hard work. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comments left? Any last comments before we move on? All right. So we went through the consent agenda. We have some reports now. I know everybody's here for the budget discussion. We are going to spend the majority of tonight on the budget discussion. I imagine we'll be tired by the time that's done, so we're going to get through a couple of things first real quick, then we're going to focus on the budget. So Caroline, do you have a report you'd like to give?
I do.
Caroline's our student rep. For people who don't know, class of 2023.
Yeah, I'm a senior here at Toronto. I was class president for three years. But yeah, I'm ready. I just wanted to comment a couple things. So last Thursday, we had our first eighth, ninth grade transition night and welcome event. It was pretty low attended, but the people who did go said that it was a very helpful event. And actually, this speaks to a pretty major problem we've seen at Toronto where many of our events have written those pronouns this year. Like people have been putting things in the aftermath of COVID, but still there's kind of like this disconnect between people coming. And to be honest, it's kind of a little too long to continue to blame COVID. There's an overall shadow of apathy from the people at Toronto that needs to be addressed and cared for. I know that many of my peers have mentioned that they feel as though they haven't mentally aged almost since the start of the pandemic. Like I'm a senior in high school, but yet I still kind of feel the mentality like I'm the deer in headlights freshman still coming into high school. And throughout the school, I've become the same feeling. People who, you know, they had COVID hit them in third grade, they still feel like they're in third grade even though they're now, you know, in fifth or sixth. And I think that we need to take some drastic measures to support students' mental health in the aftermath of COVID and try and do some things to try and fix this overall feeling students have been having.
Thanks, Caroline. Does anybody have any questions about that? That's, I don't know, the, what'd you say, mentally aged freshmen?
Yeah, I was just like, I've talked to a lot of students from all over Toronto, from like sixth grade, and they say that they feel as though no time has almost passed for them since COVID began. Like they feel as though they just had a really long, like for me, I feel like I'm still in freshman year type of thing. And it's like, whoa, you know, now I'm just looking at where I'll be in six months and it's like, it's almost like there's like a disconnect in that in a lot of students' brains, like from the time until you're on. And so, I don't know, it's just, it's been hard for some students to adjust to that because they feel like they're still blind where they like, they feel like they've lost time in a sense, and they're having trouble catching up.
I'm curious to be adjustment counselor, if you're kind of aware of that situation?
Absolutely. And we increased our school adjustment council by a half a position this year, so that's been a little helping.
Is, I don't know who the adjustment counselor is, but is that person busy?
Yes, they are very busy in the guidance office. They are very well aware of kind of the needs of all levels of our students at this time. We're very fortunate that students are actually feeling more comfortable going down to the guidance office and just speaking up their stressors and daily concerns. It's tough enough being a middle school student as well as a high school student, but when you compound that with mental health diagnoses, family stresses that are going on, we're just trying to let them know that we hear them and we want to help them process through their stresses just so that connection can continue to be enhanced because we never want them to feel like their voice and their concerns aren't being heard. I was also present at the evening that Caroline was talking about on Thursday. Yes, we would have loved to see more representation of our parents there, but the parents that were there, we did provide them with an exit ticket survey so they can give us really insightful feedback about what worked, what didn't work, what you would prefer in the future. And we're really hopeful that this is something we can continue to do in the future. They like the idea of just being very informative, being able to kind of walk around, even in the cafeteria at different tables of people that were there representing Clinton Savings Bank, the library, yearbook, so that they're hearing firsthand that yes, academics is a huge priority, but there's also the involvement of social skill set and the availability of staff to talk to them about it.
Carol, do you have an idea of how many people did attend, how many families?
I believe at one point I counted about fifty-five people. Which is really nice to see.
Back to the counselor in office.
Yes.
Are you able to describe what's that workload now versus, you know, three, four, five years ago? Has it changed? Is it different? How is it different?
Yes, and I'm really comfortable speaking on that because my first year here at Toronto was 2019. So I came in the COVID year. So being a school adjustment counselor in there, I can definitely see the increase in student needs coming through. We actually have a Google Chromebook sign-in, so we're able to track when kids are coming down. Are they coming down during preferred classes or non-preferred classes? And they're able to really establish those connections. So I would say our counseling office is very busy. Not only are they fulfilling the IEP service delivery rate just to make sure those social emotional needs are being met, or just simply teachers are great saying, you know, there's something up with John today, can someone, you know, can someone check in with him? Just so we're establishing that vision of we're seeing and hearing differences in the classroom. So they're certainly busy. I hardly ever walk down there and that there's not a kid present in an office.
Your way on this.
Or is anyone ever turned away because they're too busy in the, in that office?
In the event they're turned away, it's not that long of a waiting period. Then we have staff that are able to kind of switch in and switch out. We also want to prioritize the needs of our students when they arrive in there. We're quick to notice. Frequent flat air math class, we'll put two and two together, you know, there's something going on, but we're able to, you know, just work with each other. They work really well in the counseling office as a team. And if there's overflow, kids will come and see me in my office and we'll just continue to keep everyone apprised of what's going on.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Carol. All right. So the next item is the chair's report, and this is going to be our open seat interview. So if you're not aware, we just had our election in November 2022. There were seven candidates, six elected. All members on the committee are currently elected. We did have one spot open up in January, and we put out a call if anyone from Berlin was interested to fill that seat. And I believe Lisa Mayer is here. How you doing, Lisa? Do you want to come up to the seat over there? And I think we might have a couple of questions, an interview process. So if you're not familiar with how the committee has operated the last three or four years, when someone, when there's an open seat, the process according to the guidelines, the way the committee was organized, yep, that's fine, is for any interested people from the towns represented, put their name in, and if there are, we would appoint a new member. So that's what we're here to do tonight. We're here to interview Lisa and maybe, may or may not appoint, depends on how the committee goes. But Lisa, do you want to give us an introduction?
Sure. My name's Lisa Mayer. I live in Berlin. We've lived here since 1998. Can you hear me okay? Is that good? Since 1998, my kids went to BMS and Carol was the principal at that time, and we loved her and had a great experience there. My daughter went to Toronto. My son ended up school choicing for not school reasons, but for other reasons, Tenshova, so products of public school. We loved it, had a great experience. I went to public school, public universities myself, and have a lot of respect for it and really would like to support it.
All right. So the committee probably has some questions for you. We can start. Megan, do you want to start? We just took around the table.
Okay. So this was a question that I was asked, and I feel that it's pretty important. I'm wondering, a big part of being on this committee is we work together, but we have to be mindful of open meeting law. So social media kind of has taken over, you know, this generation. I guess my question is, what's your presence on social media? Do you use Facebook? And what are your posts usually like? Do you post political posts or you usually try to stay relatively neutral on social media? Sorry, it's a tough one, I know.
That's a great question, and it's actually something that I've kind of changed a bit because I was posting more political things, I guess, since 2016. And I ended up running for office. I ran for senate in this district. And I realized, you know what? It's probably not a great look, you know, because you don't have the opportunity to explain really. People can just look at it and make assumptions about who you are and, you know, what you really intend. And so I stepped way back and I don't really go on there very much. In fact, my, I don't really have like a profile on my own name.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lori, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I know a lot about you, Lisa, because I researched when you were running for election. I did want to bring something up because I think it's, I'm curious about, I think it speaks to who you are as a person. Could you speak about, is it Braver Angels?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So I'm currently doing a training with this organization called Braver Angels, and they are an organization that's been in existence since 2017, and their mission is to depolarize political discourse. And I think we need that in a big way in our country, you know, just everywhere. And so I am training to be an ambassador for them and also after that, a moderator. And to do that, you really have to depolarize yourself, and I've been working on that because I think that we do need to listen to each other. I think a lot of us are only hearing one side of the story in terms of politics, and it's just really important that we, you know, listen to each other, we learn from each other, and that we trust that we're all, you know, we have good intentions. Yeah. So I'm training with them and I'm very excited about it. And if I am appointed to the school committee, I would use those skills that I'm learning there, you know, when difficult discussions arise.
Thank you. I just thought it lent itself so well. And one of the questions that we were asked when we were running for election was how would we deal with any animosity or difficulty disagreements? And I thought that that really spoke to your character as to how you really use things. Because the people from both parties that are polarized that are brought together to our common goal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question. I appreciate that.
Julie?
Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
So my question is, as school committee, I wrote it down just so you don't read it. So as school committee member, one of our biggest goals is student achievement, and it's important for all of the committee members to understand that student achievement isn't measured solely by academic success. We need to be considering the whole student, not just the academic success of that student. Our kids right now are suffering, as we just heard Caroline's update. So the overuse of devices, particularly cell phones, are contributing to kids' mental health issues, part of it, certainly in part, as research is showing. So my question is, do you think that cellphone use in the schools serves as a benefit to student achievement or a hindrance, and why?
That's a great question because they are so useful, you know, with checking schedules and things like that, checking messages and emails, you know, things that are actually useful. But I do think that probably overall, especially with the younger generation, but also with our generation, that it does tend to be maybe not productive because we're looking at social media and we're comparing ourselves to other people who are just putting forth their A-game. And it's probably not great for mental health and probably more of a distraction. Yes.
Jesse.
So thank you for applying to be appointee of the school committee. And thank you again for answering the public questions that were put forth to us for the election. So I had a question. So regarding the questions on potential controversial books or curriculum, you say you trust the superintendent and teachers to choose the best materials for their lessons. And under the next question regarding your individual stance, you say you're committed to free speech and that censorship is a slippery slope, which I definitely agree. But the next sentence, you say that political agendas with new sexual and experimental and divisive content are being brought into schools and are another slippery slope. So my question is, how will you make sure LGBTQ plus students and staff and allies will feel supported and safe in our schools?
I think that we need to have respect for each other no matter what, and we need to listen to each other no matter what, and we need to not bully each other no matter what. I think that that works for everybody, including LGBTQ community. So if we have a community based on respect and understanding, then that will help everybody.
Sorry, I'm just making my note. Thank you. Lisa, I don't have any questions for you other than just your availability. The reason this is here is because we meet on Tuesday nights. There's been discussion about possibly changing when we vote on the calendar, which will be next month or the month after. Are you available on Tuesday nights this time in earlier time, or is another night?
I'm available on Tuesday nights. Yep. I'm pretty flexible.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other follow-up questions? Or we can, if anyone wants to make a motion to appoint Lisa Mayer to the committee, they can do so, and then we can discuss anything that we need to discuss.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I love your resume and your background, that you're a yoga teacher and meditation and all that. It's just a huge passion of mine, so I just wanted to say I love it. And I love that you went to the INI, the nutrition school. It's awesome. Okay. I'm done. For now. For now.
If we had multiple candidates, we would go to the next candidate and we would, and see if anybody had a motion for anyone. We have one candidate. Does anyone have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Mayer to the BDRS school committee.
Okay. Does anyone second that motion?
I'll second. Okay, go ahead.
Sounds like Julie. All right. So any discussion on this? All right. All favor of appointing Lisa to the committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone a guess? Okay, Lisa, you're appointed to the committee.
Thank you.
For tonight, you can stay and hang out, watch and listen. You can't vote or participate in anything because you have to be sworn in out of the town, but we'll get that going tomorrow when their offices are open.
Thank you very much.
Next is subcommittee reports. I don't think any of the subcommittees, other than the budget committee, some budget subcommittee has met since our last meeting. And Megan, we're having a budget discussion in a bit. Do you have an update other than budget to make?
That is all. We have been living, breathing, drinking, sleeping. All we've been doing.
All right. Our last item before the budget end is a presentation of aims web with Sally and Karen.
All right. So our presentation is to outline the year's results for INFLU. At Toronto, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders take the INFLU at the very beginning of the year. At the very beginning of the year, almost immediately after school starts, so that teachers can be the baseline. And then each of the grades organizes their own tests again right around the end of winter, so usually towards the end of January or early February. And of course, we use this to identify learning gaps and see if students are struggling, see if they need support anywhere else to help people with instruction. And, but it's not necessarily used for looking for mistakes. So in regards to literacy and reading performance, this paragraph depicts the average scoring levels of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Our district goal is to ensure that eighty percent of our students are performing at or above the sixty-eight percentile. As you can see, that's happening in all categories, which are very proud of. It also shows that growth is a measurement of the student progress from period to period. So we break it down from grade to grade. We first take a look at grade six reading, and you can see that this bottom line is the national level, and then at the top bar represents Toronto. Not only are we starting off way above the nation, but we had growth that was higher than the nation as well. And it's also depicted that the average reading for our group was ten points, where the national was five. And there's also familiarity with sixth graders from taking things out of an elementary school in comparison to rest, since they get a little bit older in middle school also. Right. So it's a nice transition to come up to, to come to where they are and they need to take new tests. This is the seventh grade reading score, where you can see again, the growth is not quite as steep as the national level is, but again, we are above. And the seventh grade actually shares some observations with us, you know, just stating that, you know, the growth may not be as high, but it could be reasons such as the fact that material becomes more complex as you go through the year. Also that grades are starting to get a high level, there's a boost for growth. And there was also some comments that were made about the fact that, and we see this a little bit more in seventh. and we see this a little bit more in seventh, eighth grade than we do in sixth grade, but the students really take it very, very seriously when they first come in, at the very beginning of the year. They still take it seriously in January, but now they're a little more relaxed, you know, so. And that makes funny the fact that, you know, we weren't too bad for them anyway, but they got the reading. Did not have too much growth. We're still above the nation, but we need to overlook it there. Again, there's a, there's complexity to the material. And then also, as we talked about, there was that observation that they don't take it quite as seriously. So this one illustrates math performance again. It adheres and shows that we match expectations for our district pool. Sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are all above the 68th percentile in performance on the math. And again, the team measurements from period to period. So again, we take a look at grade six math, again, where our nation has a nice, um, sheet, every level of growth for the sixth graders. And seventh grade is also the same. And then we can take a look at, um, so now note on this one, you can see that actual national average, there was a much growth in comparison to fall range. But those seventh graders, we saw a significant growth. Our growth was seven points. The national average was one point. And we have eighth grade, where the growth was pretty similar actually to the nation. But again, we started and higher than we should as well. I think one of the takeaways is that we have like actually many supports and prompt employees at school to help us. I think that's why our students are doing so well. For instance, what everybody gets in a tier one level support is the fact that all our sixth graders take reading classes, all our seventh graders take a class. We just started a couple of years ago, post-copic, all middle school essential skills. We'll talk about the, you know, what they do in those classes in the next slide. But, and then of course, there's English in our math. For tier two, we have like a title one literacy tutor who comes in and she pulls out students from the reading courses and the middle school essential school, middle school essential skills class, and works on them one-on-one if there are students that are struggling on the A-Test and other things, because actually that's just one tool. We also have ELA lab for grade eight, and we have a math lab for both grades of the year. And when it comes to tier three, obviously that's an alert that there's more need for students for support. We have Wilson, we have Gordon Yonham. We're very fortunate that this year that some of our specialized teachers are able to actually get trained to have more staff able to do that. And again, we have the ELLs for core classes for our middle school and high school students. And one thing I just thought of that we didn't put on here is that our grade, all of our sixth graders also take a class in sixth grade, which is an intervention block. And the whole team works together to look at how students are doing. And they will pull individuals to, you know, to work on specific things with them that they need, you know, whatever they specifically need. So that's a very helpful support that we have to provide. And this slide illustrates the class targeted support that reinforcement that our staff members are able to provide for our students. There's math lab for seventh and eighth grade. It does not take place of their current math class, it actually complements it. So if students in that class are indicated, they would be assigned to it based on teacher recommendations, reports from AIMS Web, and consult with the school counseling staff. So it helps them just to enhance that fundamental skills that they have, and it's every other day. In regards to the ELA lab, runs similarly to math, you're just enhancing your ELA skills. So it's whether it's fluency, literary content, just knowing how to express yourself in writing. And that also runs every other day. And last but certainly not least is the middle school essential skills class. It's kind of a milkshake, sorry. We implemented that right after voting, because let's face it, it's hard to get back from the routine. So in this course, they're talking about test-taking strategies, how to prepare, how to study, how to get ready for what's next in the class, which we're very, we're very confident that is just going to complement them as they go up in grade levels here in Tejano. And they work when they're ready. Any questions?
Who's the questions?
I think one quick one. Just, I think it's great. The class targeted support for the math lab and the ELA lab. I know you said it doesn't take place in the regular math and the ELA. What class do they not have as a result of that?
It takes place in, on the electives.
Ah, I see.
I think the AIMS Web scores being so much about the national average speaks to the efforts of the teachers.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have one quick, sorry, go ahead. All right, I just one quick question. I'm sure it's not, it's not you. I know it's how AIMS Web is. I'm wondering if across the board, we could see AIMS Web, our district compared to Massachusetts?
That's my question.
Oh, really? Well, I'm just thinking like nationwide, you know, there, some of the states were different. So even if it was like New England, I just, you know.
Do we have that?
They used to, and when they converted, they upgraded to AIMS Web Plus a couple of years ago. They still don't have enough data to do just a Massachusetts average. They're hoping within the next year or two. Because the Massachusetts average, you're right, was a lot higher. When we compare our Massachusetts kids to our Massachusetts kids. These are, you know, Alabama kids and.
Well, that's what I'm.
Losi and Buffalo kids. Exactly. Frigging that average, we did.
Why did you choose the 60th percentile for success?
That seems up to. They all do it. But I don't know either.
Because John did.
Okay, why did John do?
Because, again, because of the sample that we're looking at, we should be able to do better than like half of our kids a week ago, like half do now. When we roll it up to the 60th percentile, you can start to feel good about our kids are making progress. And so that's what we made that our target. We, it's a challenge sometimes to get there. It's more challenging in the early grades than it is later. But it's been a good target for us because it's still a stretch. But again, high and middle school testing is a little different. The sample size isn't as great.
What eighth grade, do you show the client? Is that typical? Is this an anomaly year? Is that, how does that compare to the years past?
You know, I can get that information for you.
So I'm wondering eighth grade, they're getting ready to go to ninth grade, if they're not performing well in eighth grade, is that one reason why they might be leaving the district? Have you looked into that at all? Have you done any sort of exit interviews for eighth graders that leave going into ninth? Because we do see quite a drop in enrollment in eighth and ninth, right?
And we'll still do this test again beginning of the year, you know, so that we can take a look at that as well. But I'm certainly, we're going to have to look at the comparison later to get that information for you.
Part of the budget process that we're going through is trying to figure out what can we do differently to keep kids in the district versus going, if they're going to go to a vocational school, electrical plumbing, can't help that. But if they're going to private school, or they're going just because they don't like it and it's their chance to leave for whatever reason, is there, what can we do about it?
Well, that's one of the reasons we started the eighth and ninth grade transition meeting actually, to give information that we just didn't feel was maybe there enough for people to make those decisions. You know, so I think that's a start. But you know, certainly the idea of that's.
Curious also the timing of the eighth grade reading test. You know, the last that was, teachers commented that they weren't as engaged. So curious if this was like a Friday afternoon before a very break or, you know, like something where maybe their attention wasn't as focused.
Those are definitely all considerations we can take after the team and just get more observation from them. Thank you. Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the budget discussion. But before, I have a few comments to make about the last few weeks and few months. And I did break it down as well, just like Julie, so I don't ramble on and get on. I'm just gonna get to it. We have several special guests here from the select boards, finance committees that leave Tejano. Kristen is here. Yeah, just got to help us along with the tax implications of this budget that we're considering. We agreed last night not to take a vote on it tonight with the finance committees, just because they are still trying to wrap their heads around all their numbers. We're probably gonna discuss this and vote maybe on the 21st of this month. But it's our as-needed meeting, maybe have that as our budget hearing. But I want to start by saying thank you to the community for supporting your schools. I want to thank Julie and Megan for working on the budget subcommittee so tirelessly, bringing us through this process. And Carolyn, Nancy, working beyond what anyone really should reasonably expect an employee to do to get this work done. How many hours on Sunday afternoon are we back and forth dealing with that? They've given more than anyone can know, and I know your work is just great, so good luck with that.
Tommy Brody.
Thank you to the teachers of Berlin, Boylston Regional School District. You continue to show up despite the challenges thrown at you the past several years. And everyone who watched last night's finance committee meeting in Boylston, with the Berlin community as well. By now, you know that we're in a situation where it is possible that we can have some decisions that may or may not go if we don't find a way to fund a level service budget. We'll hear more on that soon. But I can't fathom the level of anxiety this might bring as you go through these days teaching, the social and emotional anguish you might face, knowing the situation remains unresolved. Yet you showed up today to teach our children, and you'll continue to show up tomorrow to teach the children through all this. So I feel confident in saying that this committee is going to work and do everything we can to figure out a solution to this situation. We are, as we saw earlier tonight, four months removed from the November election, this first election for the regional school district, which was delayed for two years. Many thought would never come. And already in those four months, we've seen our fair share of distractions, changes, challenges, enough to sort of fill a decade of school committee work, just in a few short months. We're in the midst of hiring multiple new leaders at our schools. We have a new acting and soon-to-be superintendent, Mrs. Costello. We're working for the first time with a new finance director this year, Mrs. Kineski. We created the new budget subcommittee headed by Mrs. Grill and Mrs. Lee. And within weeks of the election, we had unexpected challenges to deal with. Having only been a part of this team for a few days, Mrs. DeGna already stepped right in and helped us to get through. We voted to hire a new attorney, attorney Mrs. Rozak. She's been invaluable help to this group as well. In January, our schools dealt with their own shelter-in-place order as our police handled an emergency situation close proximity to the school buildings at precisely the inopportune time that school dismissal. Right, so that was a challenge. We've had to face the situation that we just completed tonight, appointing a new member four months removed from our election. So lots of distractions, lots of challenges in there, dealing with unprecedented budget changes that every town in the district faces. Most importantly though, this committee is still relatively new to the job. It's been a steep learning curve for everyone here, myself included. I'm happy to admit that. But thank you to everybody for your commitment to the job and your ability to act and react as fast as possible at anything that's thrown at you, and we know you are committed to this job. So with that, Carolyn and Nancy, would you please take us through the budget options?
Sure. I also want to thank everybody who was there last night. I think that we, we talk to one another in a really significant way. I'm grateful for our time. It's the first time we've really all come together in that way. And I said that last night. I'll say, I want to just reiterate that, how much we appreciated the invitation from the Boylston Finance Committee to come and join with that conversation. Berlino was there. Nancy's gonna go through some of the slides that she shared last evening in just a moment. I also just, I have to take a moment to thank all of these people behind me and on the sides of me that I work with and across there every day, all of our teachers, who I'm grateful for, I know well, we've spent many years together, some of, many of you. And they're certainly our new teachers, and I do, I cannot advocate enough for these people who are there every day with our children. It means everything. It's why I'm sitting here right now. And I said this in the beginning of the year before when I was applying for this position. In the fall, I'm here because of our children, all of them. And I am gonna advocate strongly and continue to do that for them and for all of you who sit there going every day and take care of them and advocate them. I'm grateful for that.
Nancy, before you start, if you wouldn't mind, for the committee, if we can hold all of our questions until Nancy's done, and then after Nancy, folks from the town committees, if you have something to say. Kristen, if you can talk to us a little bit about the process to get from here to town meeting before the committee starts to ask questions. Go ahead.
My presentation is gonna be brief. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. I'm just gonna give you a summary of where we stand right now. So when we originally came together for the budget, we took our district improvement plan. We took all of our needs and all of our wants, and we put them into our budget. And that's where we started, being very hopeful. Then as things started to come together, meeting with the towns, and kind of getting a grasp on reality of where we really stood, some obstacles came in our way. One of the obstacles was special education. Special education has skyrocketed for our next school year. From budget to budget for special education, from '23 to '24, it's gone up 1.3 million. That includes out-of-district tuitions, personnel, everything. So that was a huge obstacle that we faced. Another huge obstacle is health insurance. Our health insurance is going up 10.5%. So with those two obstacles, we knew we had to kind of really reevaluate and take a look at where we stand. So what we did is we came together again and prepared two options that we thought we would share with the towns. So I'm gonna quickly go over those options with you to show you what we did. So the first one is a level service budget. So this is your basic minimum required spending to keep your educational services flat from 2023. So nothing, nothing changes. Your, every, all your services, all your programming stays the same except for your contractual increases. Your vendor increases, your teacher contracts, all of that, you go according to all the rules and regulations. That's the only thing that changes. So looking at that, I have it split out by each school. So for Berlin Memorial, you can see that the, you have the operating budget on top. So the dollar increase is $550,000 with a 13% increase. For Boylston, the dollar increase would be $784,000, a 16% increase. And Tejano would be a $1.2 million increase at 13%. Then you have your capital budget, which will stay the same throughout. So, and it's broken out for school again. So for Berlin, it's the increase is $284,000 at a 173% increase. Boylston Elementary is an increase of $558,000 at an 859% increase. In Tejano, $585,000 with a 21% increase. Our state revenue has come in, and our district revenue is forecasted out. So for our chapter 70 revenue, we got an increase of about $350,000. In our chapter 71, we got an increase of about $117,000. It's more than we've gotten in prior years, but it's not enough to make a difference, help solve our problem. Our next option is looking at the below-level service budget. So with a below-level service budget, we lose everything from the above-level service plus a reduction in force of approximately 11 positions across the district, including teachers and support staff. Support services for general education and special education will be reduced. Additional programs and courses will be eliminated. Class size increases across the elementary school, class sizes will increase. So that looks like this. For Berlin, it drops it to a 9% with a $360,000 increase. The capital stays the same. We kept it the same. For Boylston Elementary, they brought it to a $556,000 increase at 12%. And for Tejano, they brought it to a $763,000 increase at 8%. And quickly, I thought I'd just show it to you since the capital's in here, what we requested for our capital requests. So as I heard earlier, we'll start with the middle one, Boylston Elementary, with HVAC installation, additional IT support to help with the Chromebooks that was mentioned earlier, to help with the switches in.
Wireless access.
Wireless access. Pop ears in the building, the kitchen floor in the kitchen needs replacement. Request for our truck facilities. We have a new facility director. He uses personal vehicle going from building to building. It'd be nice to have a vehicle that we could use, that we call our own, that he could use. The roof isn't currently on here, but we're looking into it because there's a lot of. but we're looking into it because there's a lot of different things going. We've got to figure out what's really going on with the roof before we can put a dollar amount to it. We're not sure. We're having, we are having a facility assessment done on the building. And when that comes back, we'll know what repairs need to be done for the roof. And then we'll look into getting, putting that on here and working with the town on that. And they're fully aware that that's coming up. In Berlin Memorial, a new flat roof, IT support, copiers, plumbing repair, a lot of the boys' rooms, the toilets and the sinks need to be replaced. We need replacement for some exterior doors and the trucks on there because it's split throughout the district. A lot of the stuff in Berlin Memorial, we did a building assessment two years ago. So we're trying to kind of work on some of the issues that were brought up in the building assessment. Tohonto, IT support, same, all of it. Most of these things are spread throughout the district. So you're going to see repeats of them throughout the school. So you've got a security system upgrade. We need to upgrade our security system in Tohonto. We need more cameras so we can kind of see what's going on inside and outside of the building. Copiers, 3D printers for some of our programs to keep up with everybody else. HVAC upgrade. And then you have your principal and colonists for the building. And I think I'm just going to leave it at that. I think we have a lot to talk about tonight. And then if anyone has any more questions, I can pull, there's a lot more slides here.
Thanks, Nancy.
I figured a brief overview would be the best.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. So before we get into this discussion, so there have been some questions brought up. Do the towns agree? What if one town agrees and another town doesn't agree? What's the process to, who has to approve the budget? How do people vote on the budget? When does that happen? How do we get there? So Kristin from Berlin is here, and she's going to help us with some of those answers.
Let me just stand up right here?
Sure, wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, no problem. This is where all those years of public speaking is here. So let me talk about kind of the process of how it goes on in Berlin first.
Yeah, what happens once the committee votes on budget? What happens after that?
Once the school committee votes on budget? Okay, so we check in with this because I feel like there should be a flow chart because there's a lot of if this happened, then this happened. So it's a little bit complicated, which is probably why you've gotten some different answers. And that's obviously confusing. So I've actually spoken with our legal counsel. The way that the process would work is your budget does go to the town meeting. And there, it would be recommended as either a recommended by the FinCom or the FinCom can recommend their own budget. So they can both be on there. If it's just one that everyone comes to an agreement on, it would be just one that goes on there. But your budget goes on the warrant as you vote it, no matter what. And then there would be a motion to say the budgets are different. There would be the ability to make a motion to accept the higher budget should the school budget be higher.
Who makes that motion?
That motion can be made by any resident on the floor of town meeting. So at Berlin, it would have to be a Berlin-registered voter. So also, the superintendent is afforded an opportunity to speak at the town meeting as well. That is part of kind of the statutory guideline as it's outlined. And then basically, if the budget is agreed upon, we all go forward and everything is great. If there is a difference, the town meeting is adjourned. The school committee goes back and has an opportunity to take another look at the budget and present another budget to the town for another vote. That is a 30-day, typically 30 to 45-day process. So the issue you have there is you're running up against a little bit of timeline. Our town meeting is made first, and I believe Boylston's is the same evening as well. So trying to get the logistics of that, we have to figure out because we need to get a budget agreed upon and placed by July 1st. So say you come back a second time, you still can't arrive at an agreement, we would go to a district-wide meeting. So that would be folks from, that are registered voters in Boylston as well as Berlin. And it's a majority vote.
Who calls that meeting?
I'm sorry?
The district-wide meeting. Who calls that meeting? Is it both towns together, the school committee?
School committee will call for that meeting, is my understanding. Yep, so, and then hopefully we all agree. If not, the, you know, worst-case scenario is you go to what's called a 112 budget. And that's for every month until, you know, we can reach an agreement. And it's based on typically FY '23. Or the commissioner gets involved from the state, they can actually set that budget slightly higher than the FY '23 if they so choose. And hopefully, we won't get that far down the road. I, you know, as I've said all along, I'd really like for us to kind of work together and come up with a plan. And it's definitely just an issue of the numbers. And as we kind of talked about, there's that excess levy capacity versus override, which I think is a little bit confusing for some folks. So I can kind of outline that if that's helpful, really simply. So Berlin is not taxed to the max, basically. So we have approximately 1.9 million dollars in what's called excess levy capacity. That means we have the ability to tax that additional amount to the taxpayers, but we don't tax it because they made decisions over the years, the FinCom, to try to be frugal with those resources. To access that capacity requires an increase in taxes above whatever your minimum contribution is every year, which is typically a 2.5% increase. So what we did for our budget was we based it on your typical 2.5% increase, plus you're able to add in any new growth that comes in over that year. And then what we end up with is where we back our kind of numbers out of it on the town. And our town went by a 2.5% budget increase, unless there was a fixed cost, like Worcester Regional Retirement goes up, health insurance, as you mentioned. We got hit with a 10.5% increase on our side as well. So there's some challenges like that that are fixed that we don't have a choice. We have to, we have to pay. And then basically, what we do is we look at typically supplemental funding requests. We looked at very few of them this year because we really wanted to give whatever we had left to the schools. The schools have typically, from looking over the years, have done about a 4% to 6% increase. This year, kind of looking at, with everything in the mix where we're at, we're at about 5% right now. That does not include tapping into that excess levy. So just at the 2.5% increase, which brings us at the 5% for the schools, that's, and this is a rough number, so I'm going to put about 17 caveats on this when I throw this number out there because Berlin has a split tax rate, small business exemption. This is based on a calculator that's for FY '23 numbers. And if there's any devaluation on the commercial side, that gets borne by the residential side. So please, this is a wide berth of give and take on this number. But based on the current budget, you're already looking at a $400 increase in taxes just with the base 2.5%. So then if you're going into anything from 5% on to reach a level services budget with the school, you're basically tapping into that excess levy capacity and adding in. And so I did a little bit of calculation as to what that would be. And you're basically coming down to the average single-family home, which, again, wide variety of what people's homes are worth. So the state defines are the average single-family home in Berlin at $558,000. So that's your benchmark, give or take wherever you're at. So you add $400 as a base on an average single-family home of 558, give or take. I have to keep saying that's just an estimate. And then you're going to add on where you're at for the schools. So one of the things we talked about was, and I think we're still close to this number, and I know we've gone with percentages, changed a little bit, but 14% is about close to where you're at for your level services number. So that would require our budget to increase by another approximately $588,000. What that comes out to, give or take, I would say $50 to $100, is about $350 additional for your average single-family home, valued at $558,000 on top of your already 400. So you're talking somewhere between your bill going up 850 to about 900 total. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't want to speak too long for you.
That's, I think that's the confusing part for people. My notes as you were speaking said the 5% where you're at is not tapping into the extra levy.
That's within the 2.5%, which is your typical budget increase.
But then you went on, like, the next sentence was the 2.5% cap on tax increases creates an extra 400 that's into, it sounded like you were saying it goes into that levy, not that it's already calculated into the taxes.
No.
And then on the timing of when all this happens, how does that work as well?
So you're actually allowed, you know, typically within your limits of proposition 2.5, say we didn't have excess levy. You're allowed to go up 2.5% over what your maximum tax ceiling is every year. So we typically tax within that 2.5% to keep it stable with other towns because we're retaining that excess levy capacity. So kind of the direction I've received from my select board at FinCom, start with the 2.5% and look at what that increase represents as a base. That's where the $400 comes from. So in order to increase beyond that, which that initial increase represents a $400 increase in taxes, so you're looking at about another 350 to 400 to get to the 14% increase. Does that make sense?
Where's that 5% coming in again?
So the 5% was basically when we did our budgets at a 2.5% increase and we backed out our fixed costs and the small increases that we had over departments. And trust me, they're really razor-thin, bear bone. That was basically what we had left to allocate. So we're basically giving everything that we had left over within that 2.5% model of framework for budgeting.
So you're saying everybody's gonna, well, let's just say everybody's house is worth $558,000 because it's 200.
Right.
So you're saying everybody's going to get $400 increase regardless, but to get to level service so we don't have to let go of anybody, it would be an extra $350.
Correct.
I wanted to ask a question about exemptions. Because I know there was a document floating around about the town of Boylston evaluation tax summary, and I assume it's similar in Berlin. If not, I apologize. But there are some exemptions for elderly and blind, disabled veterans, widows, and orphaned minor childrens. And I know with like the CPA being passed last year, there was a certain cap, like above or under $150,000 income, were exempt from that. So I'm curious what that would look like for taxes for people within the town? How hard is that process? Is that something that people have already done and are aware of?
It's definitely a process. We do exemptions along with abatements regularly. There are exemptions for veterans. There's also what we call a senior work-off program where folks can help out with different town departments. And in exchange, they get a reduction on their taxes. So we definitely try to advertise that program. And if anybody has questions, come to the town offices, talk to the assessors office, and we can get you more information.
What is that reduction?
It's up to, well, it's a good question. Right now, it's up to about $1,825 because minimum wage has increased. But we're looking at likely capping at $1,500. That's the normal. Minimum wage has sort of thrown us off a little bit.
I have one question on the timeline. So like you said, the flow chart. So school committee votes on the budget, goes to town floor, there's a recommendation with FinCom, and then there's the school committee budget, right? So potentially two, ideally one, potentially two. Somebody makes a motion on the floor to accept the school committee budget.
Yep.
If it's a yay, we're good.
Yep.
If it's a nay, then you go through that process then. But July 1st is the deadline. So you're forgetting an agreed-upon budget.
Okay, okay. Would that go back, so would there would have to be a special town meeting then or just an agreed-upon budget?
So if the, that's kind of, yeah, I'm really thinking of making a flow chart, actually.
Why?
If, so say the town put forth this 5%, which it sounds untenable, given everything that you've spoken about. And I completely understand that. But say for some reason, some miracle happened and we all were able to agree upon 5%. You came back and said, we can do the 5%. Then my understanding from legal counsel is that's considered an agreement because you're agreeing to the amount that was voted for at town meeting. If you come back with an amount that's higher than the original amount voted at town meeting, you may have to have another town meeting to vote on that number.
What if the vote, it's not a higher amount? It's what someone makes, it's the school committee's budget.
So you, whatever you guys vote, you'll, right now, you have a couple of options in there.
Yep.
Whatever you end up voting for, that's what will go to the folks at town meeting. And that's what can be voted on. You cannot go higher than that number. Someone could propose lower. Someone could perhaps propose in between. But you cannot go higher than that number. Because what, the whole idea of voting law is posted in advance and folks have an opportunity to see that number. And maybe somebody was okay at 10%, but they're not okay at 14%. You know, so you have to be able to get that information out to the public.
Well, Mike, did you want to open on top of it?
Yeah, I know some of the selected and comp people here, if you want to add anything.
I do, because, yeah, we have some folks here.
I would cruise myself on how our program on the Boylston FinCom. So before I talk about some of these things, just the easiest way to say this is Berlin and Boylston's budget processes are very, very similar. We're literally at the same steps and everything else. We work on the same 2.5% increase because that's the 2.5 level. We also have a little bit of buffer in our budget capacity that we try and reserve, and we don't go up to that level. Those numbers of tax increases, they're literally almost the same on the Boylston side from what we were backing out last night. Okay? Before I dig a little bit more in that, I'm going to do two public service announcements for everyone here in either Berlin and Boylston. If you're involved or thank you. If you're not, please look in and volunteer. These towns work on volunteers and boards. FinCom, it's an unusual board. Members of the financial committee are not supposed to be on any other town board, is my understanding, okay? So there's some independence here. It's an advisory committee. We can't tell you this is what it's going to be. We advise the town, select persons, and then town meeting of what we think the town would do. That's you. Again, literally what town administrator in Berlin said, April on our side is going to say the same exact thing here. So in some ways, from what I'm hearing, what we saw on our side, on the Boylston side, I think we're a little bit better on our Latin side. And I, Eric, the chair, needs to go before the select person is here. But I think the level service budget is probably in scope on the Boylston side, I think, from what your discussions are. So that's what I will leave it at on our side. So whether that's helpful or not, but I give you some information at this point. And again, the discussion last night was very useful. It was started as a Boylston Finance Committee meeting for our members. By the way, we were there the night before last night. Yes, and I did eat dinner again, as usual. So it started as a Boylston Finance Committee meeting. We had discussions with the Berlin. We asked them to join us, then the school committee, and then we had this whole thing. I heard some people mention that it was on the cable channel. Unfortunately, there was only one camera there. There were some microphones.
Someone was turning their laptop. Fantastic.
It takes a lot of technology to make cameras work and everything else and stuff, so. Matt, did you want to say anything?
No, I mean, I think I spoke with Eric briefly last night as we shared what you just shared with us all. I think I'll say, you know, obviously, as a town, we want to be careful of how much we're raising taxes. We have, we have our students, we also have our senior citizens. We need to make sure that we're paying attention to. That being said, there's costs, especially this year, in special education and district provisions that are kind of out of our control. And I think the more we can involve our state representatives, our state senators, to kind of hammer this home, this is a big issue, right? There's, it's not just that, there's how many, you guys know better than me, how many unfunded mandates there are from the state that they're saying you have to do this, but we're not going to pay for it. It's getting to the point that it's going to break the town, right? And that goes along with, you know, they're pushing housing, which everyone deserves a nice place to live, but it's also untenable for the towns. Neither of our towns have the infrastructure, right, to support all that all the time? So the state really needs to to support all that all the time. So the state really needs to step up. And I know Senator Kennedy's team was at the meeting last night and encouraged us to write a letter expressing our issues and our eagerness to get more out of the state. So I think if you call, teachers call, and write letters and all that, I know it sounds kind of seditive to say write letters to representatives, but I do think that's kind of right right now to hammer that point across. Especially, it seems like our governor is interested in putting more money into it. And we kind of have to, Boylston Berlin needs to fight for a piece of power. Thanks.
We heard the same thing. So we contacted our state reps and state senator. I know our FinCom contacted them, select board, and they said, the more, I don't want to say noise, but basically it's sort of like a squeaky wheel against the grease. We understand the fixed cost of special education. And they said, the more that you can put it out there, put it on their radar, it may not be a fix for this year because, but there is a new governor in place and she is listening and starting to build her priorities. So now is really the time to get that information out there. And we've been pushing it on our end as well.
Yeah, I shared something with Nancy and Carol earlier today, and we're going to talk about that tonight, I think.
Yeah, Janelle, I'm sorry, Janelle and I took a look at it earlier.
Yeah.
And yeah, we'll work on it.
Cool.
Is there any more question for Kristin or yourself, if it passes in one town and not the other? And Berlin?
That's what I was going to ask.
So.
That's the process.
It was outlined. So let's say it's Berlin, it doesn't pass. They're going to follow along the process. It's the same process if it doesn't pass in the Boylston side, but passes on the Berlin. Now, the question is, what if it doesn't pass in both? I think it comes back to you guys to figure out a budget again, right?
It still goes to both towns again first, is my understanding. And then if both towns can agree, then we come together at that district meeting.
Okay. Let's hope we don't get to that point.
I would love not to.
So we heard from the Boylston Select Board and Finance Committee. Any Berlin Select Board of Finance here?
I don't think.
Right, Scott.
Yeah, this is Scott Scholz. Well, first, I'm just glad to have the numbers I was presenting last night, Kristin's imagining what I told you, so it helps to have you see there. We are in sync about what we're going to talk about in Berlin, trying to find a way to, you know, to fund this. I think we have made some progress about, we clearly are planning just targeting the level budget or level services budget, and that definitely is a big progress. Obviously, a whole dollar amount, we're still a ways away. I'm still digesting what I received last night. I do have some more questions about some of the funding numbers or some of the numbers, especially in special education. And I definitely want to reiterate what some people talked about special education. I mean, I've been in the finance committee back in two thousand six to two thousand twelve. Returned at the beginning of two thousand twenty-one. And even back in those days, special education was a big pain. In fact, at that one time, I would refer to, it was a pain for a day, two things I would have done is to stay big of all special education costs and elimination of the Quinn bill. Well, one of those actually happened for the great exception, getting rid of the Quinn bill and the whole police to be on school on their extra incentives. But there is hope that, you know, maybe special education can be fundamental state because that is really our big issue here. And that's, I take the piece that people most have to understand, and I still try to keep my heads around exactly what our reimbursements are and the big issue is the fact that your costs are now, will reimburse you next year. And that's the thing next, you know, because obviously this will follow on, you know, when you're talking about the budget next year, we're going to be dealing with this. So as there is a big bump in special education here, hopefully the state is coming back and giving you a big bump to compensate for that. And that is how they use those funds. So this year is just one step of that process. Next year, I think we're still going to be sitting here talking about the budget and exactly where we go because I can clearly see where you guys want to go. We try and keep things at the two and a half percent. I don't know any time to remember schools living at the two and a half percent. And as you start taking more and more of that levy capacity, access levy capacity away, one day you will be looking at having to live at the two and a half percent without doing it over. So there's something to think about. It's like, we do have that capacity this year, probably next year, but if you start eating into it, eventually that will be there, and then you'll be looking at overrides. So.
Yes.
Just one more comment. I think, I know that the school district puts out a three-year plan. I wonder if it would be a good idea if we set up some sort of, some sort of committee between the district, the finance committees, and the select boards to kind of start.
Matt, are you reading this?
Forecasting a budget step by step. Well, obviously it won't be perfect, but at least we have one for you today.
We talked about that this morning, actually, me and Carol. And I think that's something we do have to do. Be in one district now. If we can live with a level service budget. This year, we still do have not just things that you want to want to do and flash and services. The actual needs, we heard from Carol on this tonight, about actual needs. So the more we can work, starting, you know, year round, don't even start, you know, we typically don't start until December. We started over the summer this year. We have been discussing that. It is something I was going to bring up to you guys when you brought it to me too, so. But yeah, we need to do that because it's only, the problems aren't only going to grow, not problems, but the issues and concerns are only going to grow from here as the towns grow. More diverse populations in town, more needs, diverse needs, more housing, more families, more students. It all just snowballs. So being one district now, not three separate committees or three separate districts or however it goes to pass, probably a lot more opportunity for that. So let's do that.
I think I've note too, I know Nancy skipped over the, what was included in the above level service kind of the vision of the district from Carol, is that they're going to add on special education teacher, special education aide, and then also board certified behavioral analyst and occupational therapist in hopes of keeping more kids in district and eliminating some of those out of district tuitions. So, you know, I think the three-year vision is really important to invest upfront so we don't continue getting these out of district costs.
Thank you, everybody. Kristin, Matt, board's finance committees, everybody. I hope everybody here has a better idea now, better picture. If we have a discussion to have, now's the time to have it. Feel free to stay. If anyone wants to take off, feel free to stay. It's up to you. We're going to discuss.
Are you really going to make a flow chart? You need anything else to do right now? Like you, I would love to get.
You got to be like a big bright pink poster board that probably.
That's awesome.
So to start the discussion, we did agree last night that we weren't going to vote tonight on the budget as a committee so the towns can continue working, we can continue working, and done. But we've seen the presentation, we have it, we know what's in, we know what's out. Does anybody have anything to say for the committee?
I got a question, actually. So I know, I learned about the COVID S R grants, which we got it for three years, and it ends this fiscal year. I was curious, are those, I know the adjustment counselor and the voting nurse was included there, is that in our level service budget or is that, are we going to lose those?
So for next year, the COVID grant actually extends in Toronto for the adjustment counselor for one more year. We can, we have, we'll have approximately fifty-seven thousand left over to transfer over. So the adjustment counselor is still there.
So it's the point five that.
Yep. After that, no.
What other positions within the S R grant?
No, it's fine. The floating nurse, the F S, a fantasy success partnership was another piece that we had to.
Is that the wraparound services?
Wait for one second. And just a point of clarification, I actually believe that the adjustment counselor that's in that grant is the adjustment counselor that's at Boylston Elementary School as opposed to the one that's. So we do lose it? Yes.
So we do lose it?
No, I don't think so. It's just a point of clarification of where that adjustment counselor is. It's based out of Boylston. That grant. Yes.
Boylston.
So one of the nurses was part of the, we just said that, the floating nurse and wraparound services. And that's it. Yeah.
You know, I think earlier in the year, Carol and Nancy had made some amazing presentations on the three-year plan, district plan, and I'm grateful to go back and watch those presentations because I think it really speaks to the strength of our schools and also the direction that our students and our schools need to go. You know, some of the above level services were aides in the kitchen, at the kindergarten classrooms, guaranteeing three classroom teachers for each grade of E P S so teachers don't have to skip around grades. You know, obviously it's not about our personal children, but my daughter's in fourth grade of E P S and she's twenty-three, she corrected me today, classroom. Whereas my son is in a class of sixteen in kindergarten, but without an aide in the classroom, so he's a full classroom teacher. So I think with the needs of the children as they come up, you know, I really appreciate that Matt said we need to meet, you know, both towns and the district to really try to make that three-year plan happen.
I guess, kind of going off what Jess said, I mean, just listening to everyone, and I feel like Julie and me have been like on this train for so long, but like listening to where everyone is tonight in the finance committees, it sounds like the level service budget is probably going to be the most, the one that everybody agrees on. I'm wondering if Carol and Nancy, if there's, you know, something from this list. We have a list of, I think it was thirty-one items that we cut from our original budget that we approved in December. I'm wondering if there is anything that we feel is critical that maybe we could squeeze in. You know, looking at the capital budget, I think there are some great things in there for anyone that's, you know, we have the devices on there. So to, you know, about the teacher that had a broken laptop and they didn't have one, we do have the devices in the capital budget and, you know, so I think that's good. The other thing we have that I'm thrilled about is we do have an HVAC coming to E P S because it is unhealthy in the months when the temperature is in the eighties outside. So that's another great thing. So I do, I feel like we're making progress. I wish we could push a little bit more, understand, think it's a great idea to work with the towns. But I guess I'm wondering, Carol, if, you know, if there's anything before we vote, and I know I don't want to make you have to redo the budget, I'm just wondering if there's anything that we think that is a critical out of that list of thirty-one, and you don't have to answer now, maybe that we could squeeze in.
Wait, go ahead. Keep in mind that it's, so it's March. By the time we get to June thirtieth, there's going to be changes.
Yes.
Always changes.
Yes.
With those changes, let's hope there come savings, right?
Yeah.
So with those savings, that's when we get together and talk as to what we can do with them. What could, is there anything additional that we could bring in with those savings?
Yep.
So that's, that's how usually I look at it, you know, and we, God, we talk about the budget every day and look at the line items and say, what can we do here? What can we do less with here? So I, I'm sure Carol, I'm sure you feel the same way that that will be our, what we'll be doing until June thirtieth.
And I think, I think we can do that with programs that we may not have been able to get this time. It certainly, you know, it's hard to look at this list.
And prioritize, that's the thing.
Prioritize, you know, because there are.
Because they're all needs.
They are all needs for different reasons, you know, I think we spoke so much about the special education piece and not even, and the fact that if there may be CPA, an additional one, those may help us down the road to keep the students here. So as far as that, that would be a consideration. And I do want to mention tonight, you know, I've been working with some private companies about, or private organizations about trying to get some support with devices. So we're working on other avenues to get some of those, the technology in place, those devices. So we're trying to go outside of the box to get additional items.
Thank you. Thank you for getting the facilities assessment covered from outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a facilities assessment. Yeah, so I do think that we're on the right track. And I love the idea of having a collaborative group work together so that we can get this list of items. It might not be July first, twenty twenty-three, but it's coming. It's on the radar. And now it's going to be on the radar of the towns. So.
And that's how we looked at it. This is a three-year plan. This is how.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just still slightly confused about Berlin. I guess, I guess Boylston is on level. But is this, is it five percent? Is that, so we're not wishing for level?
We have our meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
We have that met, I mean, last night there was Boylston Finance Committee meeting.
I see.
They actually met. So we're, you mean, on Lexis, very much, we have the company Lexis.
Okay.
Getting a computer. So, so we will discuss tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow, so we have a discussion.
Okay.
Look, I can expand a tiny little bit on here. So what does the finance committee do at these meetings? We take all the proposed budgets from each of the departments with the specific request of the town administrator day and say, look at two and a half percent increases other than the mandatories. Put the information in any wish list and see where our number of boxes are. And then from that, we have to work backwards if we're well over that point, and that's typically the process. It's rather tedious because everyone has, what, twenty, twenty-five departments? And everyone wants everything. The killers are pros paying. The cost of gas still keeps going up. Everyone wants another hundred thousand dollars in that budget, pay more pros. And so they get a little bit, twenty or thirty thousand dollars more each year. So this is, this is what it comes down to, right? We want this, we're going to give you half. That means we can get someone else to handle what they want to. And that's, that's really what this comes down to.
I see. So are drafts available to review?
So that information is a working document for the finance committee. It does not, it's not public record.
It's not public record.
The meetings are public.
Okay.
Okay. They're posted.
All right, that's good.
Because this is public, open meeting laws, and we have to follow that requirement.
I'm curious, like Berlin had the, so many dollars per the average cost of house and how much more to meet with the level service. I was at your meeting till nine thirty last night listening, and bless you all for what you do. Do you, do you think, you know, people are going to be like, well, how much is this going to cost us in Boylston? And I know you were doing some creative things with how to cover it. What was the, I don't get what the point five being for on the dollar?
So this is where I have to ask the chair, Eric, who's not here. He has all these numbers off the top of his head. For reasons of how I work, I don't get attention to that level. So basically what we're saying here is that people pay at a tax rate, whatever it is, expected to be about approximately two and a half percent on average each year, is what the two towns look at. And occasionally we bump that up a little bit, but then that keeps hitting that little reserve buffer before we hit the maximum levy limit that the towns are allowed to charge for taxes, okay? Once you hit that limit, you're automatically limited to two and a half percent, as mentioned, unless the town votes to a prompt two and a half overrun, which requires town meeting and election results being positive for that. Does that help in this case? So by the way, I think you're asking is what's the assessed value of Boylston property? Is that what you were asking?
No, I guess. She doesn't want to get, you want to get to where, you want to understand, we've got a calculation of what Berlin would have to pay, what would Boylston have to pay to get to level service. We know, oh, it's three hundred and fifty dollars, but you said it'd be similar numbers. So I think for Boylston, we can assume if we hit level service, it'll be another three hundred and fifty dollars if you have a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar house on top of the board.
But they.
On top of the four that you're going to have no matter what, you have the four.
Is that.
So you're going to pay.
So, so for Boylston, from what the finance committee went through last night, we're in a little better shape than what I just heard from the Berlin side.
Okay.
So we probably are not pushing that extra little limit, but we are going right up to that 2.5 to probably about 3%. So we are going a little bit higher than probably the 2.5 that's typical.
Okay. So, yeah, it's going to be, it'll be like a couple hundred dollars maybe on $550,000 house.
So, no, no, that's above and beyond the little 2.5.
Above and beyond the 400.
So, let's say hypothetically, Boylston property is that it's assessed at the same average rate, which is, it's not, it's a little less. So if you use the 400 number, and now you're adding a little bit more to get to that level service in Boylston, I think we're looking at, how you're really stretching my.
Well, you're adding more than the 400.
You're adding more than.
But it's not as much as Berlin.
Correct.
So it'd be like six, maybe 600 instead of 850 or 750.
Flowchart, yeah.
So it's a high, it's a high, it's a high tax.
There's, your tax hasn't gone.
The final numbers we won't know until, you know.
Yes, but we're not talking, for people wondering, we're not saying if we do level services, you're going to have to pay another $5,000 a year.
Okay.
If you have a $550 house, a $550,000 house, you're going to have to pay, you're going to pay the 400 on the base increase, which is about $400, again, let's assume everybody has a $550,000 house, or whatever the average home price is, which is around $500,000. So you're, everyone's going to have to pay about $400 increase for, you know, just for two, regardless. In Boylston, you might have another $200, in Berlin it sounds like it's 350. So we're not talking about breaking the bank for taxpayers to get to level service funding, is the point, I think.
For certain.
For certain groups.
In the towns.
Yes, in my opinion.
Yeah, all right, I want to, I want to go back to, I want to ask the principals. Yeah?
Yes, what, not that I expect the answer, when some say, think about it. A year from now, are you going to be coming back with that type of increase in your budget? That we'll be talking about the same type of taxing process. I want you to think about that, because I do see what your goal is about, you know, adding all these other things.
To match what I think that's.
As I see it, the potential is we'll be back talking about the same dollar tax increase next year, and possibly even a third year after that, so just think about that.
Well, they're.
So state, special ed.
All right, hold on.
Exactly, the state.
All right, everybody can just chill out for a minute.
All right, special ed, thank you.
All of my time.
Relax. The state's also considering more funding.
Right.
Not going to probably help this year, maybe next year, we'll see. To Matt's point, yes, we probably will see another discussion like this next year, but at that point, we'll have been talking about it for over a year, so maybe something creative comes up in the meantime, who knows? I want to ask the principals, kind of change gears here a little bit, we had the Ainslet presentation, particularly eighth grade, John's really nervous he looks like. We have a below-level service and a level service proposal right here. It sounds, let's just assume, based on what we're hearing, let's assume Boylston goes to the level service, they agree, Berlin doesn't. Let's say we had to come down in Berlin to some sort of below-level service. We talk all the time about test scores and how the kids achieve, and what they learn, and can we grow, and can we improve? I have, I know every time you present, you present a very nice picture of how well it is, but it's, growth from one to two still means you're at two when you're trying to get to five. It's 100% growth from one to two, but you're still not even halfway to five, if you get what I'm saying, so. At a below-level service budget, what does that look for student achievement?
Yes, could you?
What, all principals, because you're all going to be dealing with it.
So I think, I, I'm going to push back a little bit on your premise that if.
It's hypothetical, I'll give you that.
Well, the, the theory of it, well, hey, of course, I know Berlin very supportive of the school system, so I have confidence in that, however, I don't know, Nancy, maybe you can help me with this, if we come in at that reduced rate. The cuts because of teacher contracts, those 11 positions are based on seniority. So in some ways, even if it's Berlin that's saying no, it's Boylston that gets hurt.
Correct.
Because they're the ones with the newest teachers.
Correct.
The challenge in Berlin is that you have classes that are small enough to be very attractive, like in the realty sense, and certainly attractive in terms of good teaching, 14, 15, 16 kids in a classroom. They're small by the standards of Worcester or Northborough or any of those other places, but you can't put them together because we only have two classes. If you had five second grades, you could distribute 16 kids and it wouldn't be too bad, because you have two second grades. Talking 38, 32, 35 kids in a class, that's devastating. Not that I think that's what's going to happen, but that's kind of the mechanics of Berlin. You know, we keep talking at the elementary level about the importance of sending kids to Tohonto, Tohonto, right, and you've heard me go on and on about especially literacy, and the importance of continuing to improve our literacy instruction. When we had our meeting about Ainslet mid-year, you know, we identified 1 in 4 BES students, 1 in 5 BMS students, really, you're more than a grade low. When you look at last year's MCAS results, 1 in 3 Berlin Memorial kids doesn't meet the expectation. 1 in 2 Boylston kids does not meet the expectation. So to reduce service and support, you know, so if we try to get there by like pulling the tutors out, well, who's going to come that work? Teachers are already maxed out. You can do all the small groups you want, right, it's, after a while, it's just not possible. If we want to be the school system that we can be, we have to find creative ways to continue to staff our schools appropriately. Are there things that, you know, we wish we could have? Carol wishes we could have a world language thing at the elementary level in the worst way. I don't think that's happening in the near future, and I think that's part of why it's a great idea to have that three-year discussion. That's brilliant, because we can start to plan together, what can we, what do we need? What's good, what's great, what can we afford, so that people can plan and be realistic.
I additionally think that in, in planning ahead, we will begin to be able to project things like the 57 kindergarteners who are already registered to come to BES in the fall. That is significant, that's almost 20 kindergartners in a kindergarten class, in three classes, and without, without paras. And, you know, I, I know it's something, it's okay.
It's like the birthday party that never ends.
And I, I think that those are the kind of conversations, and, you know, the more we work together to be able to project those things and those numbers, we'll get ahead of, of where we need to be because when we, when we as educators hear 57 in three classrooms, it's panic, panic right here, how do we teach those kids their letters? Never mind when we get to sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. So I think that those are the things that we need to start to think about, and it would be devastating, as John said, you know, the majority of our new staff is in Boylston. We have really worked hard to come together this year, and we are on a fantastic trajectory, but it would be devastating if that was the result of one town's decision-making, and the other town would be the recipient of the decision-making.
I never realized that, I didn't think of it that way. Regardless of which town, if there were a town to not fund level, regardless of that town, contractual obligations, legal obligations.
Correct.
Are going to affect the other town.
Yes.
I did not think of it like that, that's something to.
We have 14 non-professional status staff members at BES. But it would affect Berlin too, because you, we're gonna, the teachers would have to shift. So, I mean, it would just be utter, it would affect everybody, is what would happen if we don't get to level.
Good, Kristen, yeah, you want to say something?
I'm sorry, I don't want to monopolize, but can I make just one suggestion?
Yeah.
I think some of the confusion that's coming in, perhaps, and that would be great to clarify for folks, is when we look historically over what has been given to BESD, it's been about a 4% to 6% increase. So I think there's a bit of a disconnect for folks who are trying to understand why there would be cuts giving a 5% increase, and is there revenue drop-off? Like, I know the ESTR grants are time-limited, and I think it might be helpful for folks to kind of understand what are your revenue gaps, and what are those costs that perhaps were being funded by those revenues that now require the towns to pick up those costs in order to fund? So I think there's, that might be helpful to kind of bridge that gap there, so folks really understand what that impact is, because if you're just saying, well, we're moving from 5% to 14%, and we're going to have to cut it, not, it, it may not register with folks, but we hadn't given that much before and we haven't had to cut it, so just wanted to add that, if that might be helpful for you.
Yeah, to go on.
Yeah, I mean.
Actually, she's, it comes, yeah.
Revenue-wise, yeah, the ESTR grants, you know, the COVID grants are going away. There are positions that have been fizzling as time goes on. From '23 to '24, it's the floating nurse, it's the adjustment counselor, it's the wraparound services, there's other miscellaneous supplies and materials that was in there that aren't being funded. The 240 grant, I, normally when Janelle rates the 240 grant, she puts supplies and materials in the 240 grant. This year, we didn't do that, I took the 240 grant and applied out-of-district tuition to it because that's where our problem was. So, a lot of expenses have flowed to different areas. But at the end of the day, it does wash out because the 240 grant is the same amount, and the expenses were applied to the general budget, even though they were for different things. So we really didn't lose that much in revenue, we just didn't gain that much in revenue. That's the problem. We don't, we, I would love to have more revolving, you know, we talked, we talked briefly about maybe increasing rates. I do think we got to look at aftercare, increase school, increasing rates there, and that can help offset a little bit. But as far as, it's really the special education expenses that just hit so hard, that, that, that is the issue.
And why special ed so much this year, what's the 14% versus the 2%?
So the private special education out-of-district tuition's went up by 14%, so that was a huge hit.
Where do they usually go?
Two to three, three to four, I haven't seen.
And we have no control over that?
No control of that, totally state, nothing made to.
The state allowed a higher.
Yeah.
So that's another thing we should be lobbying with state for.
Right.
So.
And we have more kids, and we, more services, it's not just the out-of-district tuition, it's services too, these kids are requiring more services, more than we have, I have ever seen. We have preschoolers coming in that are just, have very high needs, right, Janelle, I mean.
Absolutely.
Too, and it's just, it's hitting hard, and unfortunately, it's hitting these elementary schools hard because this is where our little kids are. So, those are the, and unfortunately, that's, you know, it's, it's the expenses.
In order to move forward, as far as the state aid goes, so there's, if you follow the MAC list there, there's a lot of towns are doing the same thing, there's a writing campaign going on through there.
Yeah.
Holliston is one town who they share what they did recently. I don't think we should discuss it tonight because it's not on the agenda, it's, it'd take a lot to finalize. I asked Janelle and Nancy for some numbers for it, they're going to work on that. I think we can assign this to the, either the budget committee or the success committee to get work on that in the next week.
I feel like the success committee.
Yeah. That's right, so let's assign that to the success committee, all right?
Is that you, Lauren?
Yeah, it's me and Lauren.
Oh. No, I'm, I'm superintendent.
You're right, yeah.
You and Jess.
Yeah, me and Jess.
Thank you.
So we'll do that.
Sorry, I have so many meetings, yeah.
So that takes that off.
All right, yeah, thank you. That's good, yeah, we do, and that should be, I mean, I don't think we need to rewrite, I think it's, you just got to add in your twist, I mean, it's the same.
Yeah.
Yes, the district is, multiple districts across the state are feeling the same pain as us, that's the other thing. We are not alone in this, I mean, if you follow the news, over the past five years, multiple towns have passed overrides, multiple towns, you have the fight between the school committee and the finance committee, I mean, it's everywhere, so I just, I just feel like this is not like, oh, what's wrong in Boylston, Berlin? It's just the way of the world.
Do you have any?
Yeah, well, I, I do have a question about ESTR 30 grant and how much it was. We received $263,868 over several years, so this was like a three-year, at least three years. So we divided up that money each year, that's how we were able to fund the adjustment counselor during COVID. We were able to fund the wraparound services through that, some instructional technology. We needed to purchase more devices to ensure that students had those, the devices at home to be able to use during that. We ran, for two years in a row, we ran a summer academy, a catch-up academy for the early grades, elementary, pretty much kindergarten, first, second grade, because they were so far behind when they were coming in. The first year in particular with the kindergarten students, who didn't have any preschool the year before. We spent, did some after-school tutoring, we had in that elementary school adjustment counselor. Of all of that money, I mean, and we also had hotspot accessibility, which was nothing much, $2,220. But, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, but when you figure those things, it's, it's not, it goes fast. And again, this was over, we tried to break it up so that we can sustain some of these positions over these couple of years. And this is what the other districts, they're talking about, they're losing all of this mental health services now that they, that we got from the federal government, from the states, to fund these important, they call it important positions, right, we need to have these things in place, and then they're gone. Nothing else has come to avail us since then. So, I think that was also alleviated some of the burden that had fallen on the towns then.
Well, and I, I think it's really important, and we've talked about it before, the quarantine, the COVID measures, you're talking about the kids that are coming in from kindergarten that didn't have preschool. We're in this predicament, we have far more needs now than we did in 2019 because of what the schools had to do during that time to get through. And I think that's a big part of our ask, is that we need more tutors, we need more remediation, we need more mental health counselors. And so I think that it's, you know, it's a lot, it's like the perfect storm of a lot of things, yeah.
The other thing too, Lauren, that, so we've been funding tutors for the Title I program, and we don't get a lot of funding for Title I, a very small amount, that just funds probably two tutors for the elementaries and more for the. And that's not the full time.
Thanks, girl. Does anybody have anything new that hasn't been said, they want to say about the budget? All right, anybody go on once, twice? All right, so that, that's our budget discussion, we'll, we'll take this to the success committee, Jess, I'll talk with you about that, we'll set a date. We have a couple business ideas, this is unprecedented, you've never done this before, I don't know if this is going to work, I don't know if it's allowed, several parents have raised their hand if they want to say something during this conversation. It's confusing because other folks in the audience were speaking, they're part of all the council boards, that's why they're ready to hear, but if a parent wants 30 or 60 seconds to say anything, it's not even 8:30, so.
I'm not a parent, but I, I was hoping to ask Kristen about the process of the town meeting. So if there is the difference that you were talking about, and they say, you know, the state, they're voting no, can someone on the school committee say, I'd like a motion to reconsider, and then identify a number? So the school committee has like, an option, like option, like backup Plan B number, and say, I'd like a motion to reconsider, someone says, like a motion, you know, we'd like to present this number, because remember, you're voting on a number, you're not voting on programs at that point. It's the whole number, is a motion to reconsider, so then you don't have to go back into another meeting, you don't have to go back. You don't have to go back. I, I mean, I was, I lived in Berlin, I went to the COVID counties for a long time. And so there was this motion to reconsider. It seemed to have to be very carefully planned with that process.
Let's say open meeting logistics question.
At the last, at the last town meeting, there was something that was voted upon and people didn't realize actually that that was the vote and they missed it while they came. And so there is, I guess, within like ten or fifteen minutes, you can actually reconsider and re-vote it. But it was on the exact same motion, so I don't know.
I believe the moderator also will allow.
I'm not, right, and I remember.
So the motion is said the moderator has to allow it and then I don't remember what the vote was, like a.
It's a two-thirds.
That's something we'll, that we'll look into there.
Yeah, it depends on the bylaws of the town moderator. The moderator is, has sole authority over that.
And so this was going to be there, it was still.
So I guess the question is if, if a different motion could be considered, it's not in the board though.
We'll, we'll, we'll check into it.
So I, it's something, it's something to check into and understand that that might be a process so you don't have to use more time to go to that.
Yeah, I like it. Going once, twice. Okay, sixty seconds. Real quick, a couple of, that was the IT support, that's not super itemized. Is there more information about what that is for all three schools? Kind of need that now, if there's some ways I can get that in the books, it's kind of like ID related. Three printers is the same thing, I'm a mechanical engineer for a cats software company. It's kind of like Jam. Forty-five thousand dollars for three printers, we buy a printer that prints something the size of a human hair, precision, that seems unnecessary for when schools aren't fat labs. We have three printers, they're very affordable, ones in the thousand dollar, the three thousand dollar range. So that's, I know that's, that's small, you know, it's forty-five thousand dollars on a budget of twenty-seven, nineteen million, but that's a pair of salary. So I'd love to, to, or I can talk to you about that as well as give industry contacts to see what you do. I have one quick question, point, this is not a question, a statement about the budget. Tax rate, we pay fourteen dollars forty-six per thousand of ones to Berlin's split tax rate, so the average I think is thirteen eighty-four. There is, there's a favorite commercial developer, I'm also a planning board, so favorite commercial developer going on in Boylston right now. FedEx, for example, brings in over a million dollars a year in tax revenue in town. There are two other properties being constructed at Pioneer Drive and we needed one of them and a second warehouse there, intended to lease out. There's another property being built at Mike Bay next to Freedom Place. If you guys drove by and saw that, like, it's probably a transformer, all that stuff. So there's additional tax revenue coming in to this town. Our tax rate's been over fourteen dollars forty-six, is down from where it was. Sixteen dollars per thousand.
Almost seventeen.
Almost seventeen, just, just two years ago. So I'm, I'm in favor of the budget for the level service and even going above beyond that. But, you know, it's all, we're often living in the context of additional growth in town. And I think, I don't, I don't have a problem with the increase. All parents I've spoken with, texted with me on Facebook, the, you know, the general consensus is in favor of consistent service that we have moving forward. So what I'd love to talk to, whatever I can talk to about the IT, these stuff, I'll tap the chat. Someone about to settle it, go to grading, I'll take it with me. All right.
Would you want me to make a name?
Absolutely.
Yeah, make my name, then we'll get together and.
Cool.
Let me provide one number to you. So new growth in both, in around eight hundred thousand people's developments. It's a one-time shot to find the tax rate above that one. So that's one of the reasons why we're in a little better shape than we're in. And just getting my year tax rate went down mainly because of vaccinations.
Right, so assessments by Tesla, but actually everyone else. Depends on, something else. We're trying to hire a math teacher here, so maybe eventually. Anybody else going once, twice?
Um, sorry, I'm a little excited when you're texting me and turn down some. I don't watch it. I, obviously, everybody knows I, I said it was in the future earlier. Two things, a big thing, I think, is the lack of transparency, transparency around this whole process. I think, I got these slides that you guys reviewed yesterday and I had time because I work at home and work from home and I went through them and I marked them. I would bet you that most parents didn't have time to look at these slides and now you guys are making a very important decision, you're going to make very important soon tonight and parents have known yet what's going on. So that is a major, and I know we talked about social media and that, how big a problem is that there needs to be a better way for parents to know what's going on. And the decisions that are happening is from how, how they're gonna affect their kids. I did wanna get a point of clarification on the per pupil expenditures and why there's such a disparity between Berlin and Boylston. Now, I'm not saying that Berlin shouldn't continue to work towards as high as we can get over state averages. That's, they're, they're looking amazing. But, I mean, to Hondo, it was a shock to me to see these, I just love the averages.
The percentages are long, actually. There was a calculation, there was percentages of long, if you look at the actual numbers, it don't make sense. They're probably over from the.
So did you get the?
Previous data, they're not as bad as they were.
Did you get the handout from today because, because it was revised?
But they still below.
They're still, they're, they're below. They're, they're better adjusted, but that's beyond the scope of what we're.
So does this level service plan, does it, does it adjust that? Does it work towards bringing us all aligned to state averages, right? It didn't sound like it did.
The level services.
So you guys proposed level service, right, from what you were talking about?
It's not where we, it's not where we need to be.
So it doesn't. So I think if parents knew that by voting for level service, it would keep them, their students in Wilston under the average state loan spend, that would be like, they would be like, no, we're not doing that.
Just, to be fair, we're, we're out of line with towns where I was in, both boroughs. Hudson are around the same, across the district. Not saying that it's, it's still below the average, it certainly is trying to be there or above. But where we are in town, listening, what skews the spend, I suppose, is layers of administration. Chicago spends thirty thousand dollars per student. You know, it has, it has less than ten percent students.
Not to be rude, but that could be off, but that conversation is beyond what we're trying to attempt. All right. Like I said, it's unprecedented, we've never done this at the end of a meeting. So thank you guys for speaking up, we appreciate it. We do have a couple more items to get to, just business items, a few votes, I think, unless there's a pressing new concern from anybody in the back, no? Anybody? Twice, three times, gone, okay. Business items moving on. Number one, the school year calendar, it's there for a first read. Does anybody wanna say anything about the school year calendar?
Carol, I just have one question on that, and I'm sure it was asked last year, but I'll write it down. How many PD days are there?
We divided it up now. There's one, there's one in August. There's a half, half day in September, so there's a half day.
Half a PD, okay, so I counted the P's as half.
No, we did, we, well, originally we were splitting these up so that they were all part of the P's.
Yeah.
Except for the first one in August, but then we realized we were short two teacher days.
Okay.
So we had to, we had to adjust that, so we turned those into full days.
Okay.
It's whatever was in blue, one, two.
Okay.
And that one on March, that's the one we have, the morning PD. And then the afternoon are the, is the parent.
Okay. And then, and then the rest, April, May, June, my notes.
April, May, June, just to.
Yeah, there's not.
Nothing in April, right, May, or June, sorry.
Okay, and then my follow.
And I'll tell you, we have a P D because there's M tests. And we have a full, we have a week off in April and then there's also a, an M test in there. It's a nightmare to try to.
And is, the P D is separate from the staff coming together within their teams to collaborate?
No, that, well, that includes both. That includes a full day and then those half days.
So half day, you do the teams collaborate.
One of the reasons we tried to have the, the half days in here is because it gives us more opportunities for the year on a consistent basis for the teachers to come together in that way and collaborate in time that they can meet. So they, they do get a lot more accomplished over time. So that's, and also it keeps the students, we count the day.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, also, I really like, and I think many parents will like, that you're starting on a Wednesday instead of a Monday. I think that was just an.
Yeah.
A really bad.
It's very hard.
Yeah.
I would be surprised how many.
So.
Vocalized.
So, thank you.
And three days to start.
Can't tell you how many kids got sick that week?
Five days the next year.
It's like, it's like three and four, then five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we still get out, I mean, we still are.
Exactly, they need to.
I'm sorry, essentially.
Get on those little kids. Oh, I guess the big kids do. Thank you, yeah, all right, this is good.
All right, anybody else last chance?
No, we're not voting on this now.
No, it's first read.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. Program studies, first read. Anybody anything on that?
I have one, I have.
Yes.
Only one.
Yep.
So it's such a long document and I felt like this every time I go to help my kids navigate this. Is there a way to do a middle school one? And I know some of the courses are the same and then a high school one. So parents, when you're scrolling in the kids too, it's not so daunting. Because we're, so you're speaking to the fact that there are two separate schools in middle one, in middle school, preschool.
I mean, I appreciate that feedback, we used to have it separate and had numerous feedback that, that we, we guys should be together, so.
Can't win.
Everybody said it's a big.
Wow, what is it now? I mean, it's just a hundred and twenty pages for a very small school.
Yeah, and it was actually longer, but we removed like courses that used to contain all the classes that we used to offer that we don't teach anymore, like the whole section of that, we thought, we're never teaching that, you don't want that in there. We actually removed several pages, was there not?
Okay, wow. All right.
Jess, your turn.
Yeah, so there was a lot of red highlighted sections.
Those are things that are removed, that are going to be removed.
So is telecom, digital communications no longer to be?
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matt. But is that true? So is, is there nothing replacing that?
It, it comes from the fact that our teachers are, are teaching five courses instead of professional staff volunteering to teach six.
Say that one part again.
It used to be that our professional staff could volunteer and teach six classes, but now we don't have that, so they just teach five, so we had to drop some.
That does not happen anymore?
They, they teach.
That's part of the negotiation.
Right, they were, they were teaching that.
I know that, I thought that was.
A whole lot of red, it's too bad.
Some of it though, Jessica, Bella, for instance, are, there's a class called 3D Design and we put it in red because they just kind of made it more, you know, modernized it and they changed the name to manufacturing. So it actually still exists, it's just a little different. So some of those reds are being replaced by something else, if there was yellow after it. But for some things like, you know, that telecom, digital communications class, there, there are some things that are.
And then there was, there was some cooking and sewing and.
Yeah, those were some older classes that we, you know, when we were in the hybrid year too, we had some very different classes, just the structure of our schedules very different. But we've gotten away from that, so some of those things are going to be from that.
Anybody else?
So they're not gonna do home acting high school anymore?
They haven't.
No. What? This is why nobody knows. This is why people don't know how to cook.
Yeah, you do.
Or sew. Well, I don't know how to sew.
Or that's not.
I know how to cook. All right, okay.
But there was a finance once I saw in there, right? There's a required.
Yeah, like financial literacy, you're right, it's required.
Yeah, we have a few different courses that's outside that, that's important.
Okay. These things are very diff, my only suggestion is it's very difficult to read. And I know it's a ton of work that you put into it and it's awesome and I appreciate the yellow highlighted section you added about the process, scheduling changes, that's huge.
And all the red gets taken out, now we're gonna be a little shorter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it will be a large order.
We're gonna have to have a basis.
All right.
All right, what else?
Lori, we, what's the situation with these two policies?
Okay, so the harassment policy, this was struck from the agenda due to the policy meeting. We couldn't get together during the busy, busy budget season. But I just wanna explain to you the timeline. We've actually, we've approved this harassment policy. Policy was updated in May of two thousand twenty-two by Attorney DuPere. He noted the change in the Massachusetts laws for protected classes. He redid the whole policy for us. We voted for it, we passed it. Actually, we voted it down in June and we requested that the policy subcommittee review and then we passed it in August of two thousand twenty-two. The confusing part was MASC came linked to the party, sent us an update and we're like, oh, we have to update it again. So that's what we just kind of figured out. So what we're going to do is we're just gonna compare, all MASC did was change the, the language regarding protected, like hairstyles and things like that. So we'll be reviewing that and it will likely be, I don't know, Mike, do you think it'll be a vote rather than a first read since we've already voted for it? Or will it just go to a first read and then vote? I mean, if we're kind of.
We'll figure it out in the policy.
And then policy J F B B, we actually voted on that last meeting and passed it. So it's, we're striking that from the agenda, that's number five.
All right, so first vote, we actually have voted number six, substitute pay. Nancy, two seconds on this?
Yes. So in the subcommittee, we met earlier in the year and we kind of benchmarked certain positions. One of the positions that we've benchmarked was actually the substitutes. So we would like to come to the committee to look for an increase in substitute rates. We reviewed seven neighboring towns. Most of the rates are between one hundred and ten dollars to one hundred and twenty dollars per day and it increases with having a license. So we currently pay our substitutes ninety-five dollars. So I would like to ask the committee for approval to increase the substitute rates to a hundred dollars a day. And if they have a licensure or are retired, we would like to ask the committee that they would be paid a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
This is to remain competitive.
This is, with the increased cost of living and the extreme difficulty of finding qualified substitutes. We just really feel that our rates are no longer adequate, so and to stay competitive.
Can I have a motion to decrease substitute pay as stated?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Motion passes, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nature's Classroom fundraising, Julian, something to say on this?
Yes, Nature's Classroom, so excited. This is just to seek plenty of approval on any potential fundraisers, any fundraisers, not any potential, any fundraisers that the community members are going to do for Nature's Classroom between now and May ninth.
All right, we have a policy on this, so as long as they follow the policy. Can I have a motion to approve the Nature's Classroom fundraising? Jess, second?
Second.
Megan, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes? All right, motion passes.
Charm, we'll be long.
Oh, I missed the first read, sorry. There's school choice recommendations, first read.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on that? Nancy, Carol, do you have anything to say on that?
We support it.
So that's the first read, we'll come back and vote on that next time. Take a look at it, if you have questions, I imagine that's gonna be a big discussion next, next meeting.
It's just a yearly, we build.
Yeah, the yearly, yeah, they make recommendations for numbers. We go through why with reasons, yes or no?
So we'll do that on the twenty-first, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
That takes care of the business items because we're not voting on the school budget tonight. And Carol, has something?
Yeah, I just quickly wanna introduce Lisa Corchene, who started today. Oh, dear. Executive assistant to the superintendent and the school committee assistant and, oh my gosh, we are so grateful.
Thank you.
If I made a mistake by not letting you do that first, I'm sorry, because everything.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure before she left to show how, how happy we are that she's here.
We have a future agenda items, proposals on there. Anybody have anything?
I think revisit the, the granted V E S, the R A D O, thank you.
Yeah, I did, I've reached out to the, the show up board and just have. That's who I was looking for, maybe someone else could reach out.
The R A D O? You mean the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about, actually, yes, that was what we talked about last time, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, Lori's got it, right?
Since that was brought up, I got a quick comment on that. Dan actually paid me a visit today, and he was, has been working on getting quotes for that. And everybody that he has reached out to says, why would you get quotes for that? Because all the schools are a slab, they're, and they don't understand. So, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was expecting to hear from the Board of Health, but I just.
Yeah, so we definitely wanted, yeah.
Can we do, can you do, I mean, again, this might sound like a dumb question. When we tested for radon to see if we had a problem on Compass Circle, which is a stone's throw from the school, and we did have extremely high radon levels, so I am a little concerned.
The thing about radon is very localized to the.
It's, it comes from rocks.
So you have a big.
That's fair, that's fair, because, yes, because on School Street, I didn't have a problem when I lived on School Street. So Nancy, can, can we do a test, like, can Dan do a self-test? You know what I'm saying? Can you, can he buy something from Home Depot and do it, or is this like, because the building's too big?
I think the building was too big. I will check with him, I did ask him at the very beginning, and I believe he told me that the building was too big. One of the other thoughts that I just had is I wonder if it could be part of the facility assessment. Because in the Boylston.
Oh, good idea.
Oh, yeah, it's a great idea, yeah, yeah, that's a great idea, yeah.
Because it's assessing the.
Well, hang on, thirty-five thousand, yeah, they should throw that in there, yes. There's a radon mitigation system with us.
So I just wanna throw something else, and why can I both work in real estate? We put out radon tests all the time, you put them in the basement, and you tell them to keep all the windows and doors closed.
Yes.
So I, we would have to talk to somebody if we were to do a radon test as to how we would do it on a first floor, with all windows and doors being closed for a forty-eight seventy-two hour period. Where no one can come and go, like, it's really, I mean.
Probably more like we had.
And then the point is.
Thank, thank you, wait till we get back from the.
Yeah, no, but the, the other point is that just to make people feel better, a lot of times they do the radon because you have finished basements and just spend a lot of time in that. Not to say it's not dangerous in the next load, but you, you have more ventilation on the next load. Just want people not to panic over the radon.
Right, just wanna make sure we're making the right choice in getting it done, as quotes, you know, so far came back. Tohonto, I don't have it in front of me, it was around five thousand, and the other two were like thirty-five hundred.
Do the tests?
Yes, so I don't think the home testing's enough, because it's.
It's large.
So it's tiny, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, you want, might need to do a bunch, yeah. Alright.
So I just wanna make.
Any other future agenda items?
Actually, School Street, the radon is low, so actually it's an alley point.
Alright, upcoming meeting dates, everybody agree to meet March twenty-first, on the as needed date? Yeah, alright, we'll set that. Uh, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?